So anyway, we want to thank everybody for joining. My name is Matt Pernetta. We have Tamsin Price on the line. This is going to be the first of a series of candidate conversations, one-on-ones for people who are running for municipal office. The election is on November 3rd. Early voting starts on Tuesday, October 13th in Denton. At these locations in early voting, you can vote at any location in the area, so whichever one's most convenient for you. Please drop in, form a voting plan to do so. Right now, we are sitting down with Paul Meltzer, who is the incumbent for at-large place six.
I have a definite view on the voting plan. You should plan to start at the bottom of the ballot. Get that done. Work your way back up.
You know, and let's kind of touch on this one real quick, because this municipal election is different than I think any other that I can think of in my lifetime, or certainly since I've been in Denton. Generally speaking, the municipal elections happen in May, and they are dedicated specifically to these types of races. Due to COVID this year, the municipal election was pushed back six months. It is now on November 3rd, when you have president, senate, statehouse races, things like that. The voting plan that a lot of people have right now is based on if there's a D or an R after the name. Municipal elections are one partisan, so if you're voting for city council, or you know, mayor, or any of these, you won't see a D or R behind the name, which means that, you know, ideally, people will be more informed.
Or not informed at all.
Exactly. Now, you mentioned they're gonna have you all the way down to the ballot, down to the bottom of the ballot. So, you know, this isn't gonna be the thing where you check a box at the top, and it automatically takes care of everybody that you that you like. Voters are going to have to go down all the way on the ballot to find you. What position are you, do you know, on the?
Well, somewhere near the end, I'm sure. I don't think dog catcher's on the ballot this time, so it might be the very bottom.
But by that, I mean, so there's, there's three people running in this race. Are you first, second, third?
Oh, yeah, I think I'm second.
Second, okay. And Paul Meltzer. So now that we've covered that, and we'll probably have to do that with every one of these that we do. Thanks for reminding me. Give us, give us a few minutes on you. It's been a while since you were a new candidate for a lot of people. Voting in municipal elections is, you know, is a new experience. Just quick, what made you want to run for city council in Denton? And why is it so important?
Yeah, that's interesting. I had the experience of first running unsuccessfully against Don Duff, and you know, it taught me, because we lost by 52 votes, as some people stingingly remember, and it really taught me, you can't, you can't leave any stone unturned. You have to be willing to, to fight, because the consequences of not fighting and showing that you can fight for the people of Denton are that you can have, you know, really uninterested leadership. So, you know, I ran initially, these are old issues now, because I had, I had an incumbent representing my district that had said, there should be no big-ticket city expenditures without a citizen vote. And then she went ahead and did the biggest ticket city expenditure Denton's ever seen, and specifically voted to fund it in a way that would avoid a citizen vote. So, but what happens in the process of running is you, you really, it gives you a great opportunity to investigate, what do you want for the community as a whole that you're part of? And really why I'm running now, to continue the work that, you know, I've been doing, is because I really care what Denton looks like in five or 10 years. We've made extraordinary progress on things that I explicitly set out to effect. You know, I wanted it to be a place that, while experiencing tremendous growth, ends up, you know, as I say, in like a catchphrase, better, not just bigger, but you know, there's a lot of pressure on Denton to just develop, 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 and it's because it's a great place to live. Well, if we don't do things like preserve and build on the things that make us special and attractive, you know, it's not gonna be so great at the end. The very reason that the growth is coming is gonna, you know, could go away. So, we passed the resolution saying there should be a 10-minute walk to green space. That's a resolution, but then there's actions behind it. And that's kind of how I work. We set a goal, and then put a plan in place, and then fund it, and then see that it happens. So, you know, we used the tree fund that had been sitting mostly dormant, and bought a 70-acre tree park on the east side. It's got a lake on it. We, when the topic of a bond fund, or excuse me, bond election came up, I said, hey, wait a minute, remember we all said that thing about green space? Where's that in the bond fund? Well, we got $5 million put into that, and the citizens soundly supported that. So, you know, now we can work on having everyone live within 10 minutes of green space with connecting trails, you know, that's just part of making a livable, enjoyable Denton. Happens to be a good pro-growth strategy, too. You know, if you want to grow, but in ways that we'll like, you want to attract employers that would like to have their people live in an enjoyable place. So, you know, that's just one. That's, that's green space. People were, are perennially frustrated by how dilapidated our, our streets were, and to a great extent still are. But there was such resignation on council that, that's how it's gotta be. It's not how it is in every community. And I, and I just simply didn't accept the status quo, just that I'd like to at least before, except that it has to be that way. Show me what the plan would look like to get to where most of the streets are in good shape most of the time. Show me the plan, then we'll see if it really is just impossible. Every other place can do it, but we can't. Well, I can tell you, at the, you know, at the end of that story, we tripled the amount of street activity. It's a matter of setting priorities, because people were, you know, rightly frustrated and annoyed about it. Now they're frustrated and annoyed that there's so much construction. But that's how you get to the streets being in good shape. So it's, you know, a lot of it is just wanting to ensure quality of life. I'll touch on just a couple of other points. I'm sorry if I'm going on too long before you get a question in, Matt. But, you know, Denton is known for arts. Arts attracts visitors. Visitors keep our businesses thriving. And, you know, if we just act in a callous way toward that really sort of precious thing that not every community has, you know, we're not gonna continue to have that draw. So, I encourage the construction of performance venues, because from the venues will follow arts activity. From the arts activity will follow commerce. You know, it's part of having a thriving and interesting town. So, these are, you know, just kind of parts of how I would like to see Denton evolve, so that it becomes what we like, you know, plus, plus.
So, you mentioned something a minute ago, and it's, you know, kind of something that kind of feeds into a basic idea of what you'll have, what you have to do for an at-large. You mentioned the first time you ran, you lost by 52 votes, right?
Not that I'm counting, but...
You know, I think if anything, kind of, you know, drills home the idea that every constituent matters, that that margin kind of would. Now, you're running for an at-large position, right? So, you know, you don't have a specific district. You have to, you know, basically address the needs of our newest and youngest residents at UNT and TWU, as well as our older residents in Yerkeson Ranch. You have business interests in downtown. You have southeast Denton. You have the, you know, traditionally more liberal D2, and the traditionally more conservative D4. With the idea of you having a personal experience that shows you how vital each individual citizen, each individual vote is, and each individual voices, what is your approach to making sure that you represent everyone and not just your pocket of friends?
Yeah. Well, you know, I took quite seriously on getting elected, the need to represent all parts of Denton. And I had said that I would do town halls, where we could have a good exchange, much like this. And my plan was to, which I've fulfilled, is to have town halls all over the community in different areas. Now, the first place I went was actually a place where I had the lowest vote percentage for me. I went out to the fire station near Ropes and Ranch explicitly because I wanted that community to know that I represent them, too. Then I went to District 1, and I brought staff to talk about roads and talk about quiet zones in southeast Denton at the MLK Center. I've been at North Branch Library, South Branch Library. I've done events at City Hall on specific topics. So, you know, just like, like, like the new tree ordinance, because I know that that's a strong constituency that crosses neighborhoods. So, yeah, it's just a matter of really being accessible, and not just passively accessible, but actively going out, you know, actually, something that I don't think anyone has ever done before, pre-COVID, I blockwalked for my open houses, from my town halls, go to those neighborhoods and push the flyers out. And, and I know people came with them in hand, you know, just to know, like, yeah, I'm actively looking to engage, you know, with you. And you may not have thought about what your relationship is to city government before, but you know, if we have a chance for conversation, maybe, maybe you will.
So that kind of feeds into my question. So, we have two major universities here in town, TWU and UNT. UNT has about 38,000 students enrolled. TWU has almost 16,000 students enrolled. That's a sizable chunk of our population here in Denton. And students typically don't participate in municipal elections. They have very low turnout numbers.
Don't say that.
Yeah, not, not me. But, so we've seen drives in the past couple of years to get polling locations on campus. And we've not seen a lot of follow-through afterwards from council members or from council candidates. And a lot of the excuses are that students are just apathetic, or young people are just apathetic. But we've seen students get really passionate about local issues and local government issues. So what do you think that council candidates or council members can do in the future to really reach out to our student population and really address those needs, and, and really try and reach them where they're at, and get them more involved in municipal elections?
Well, let me go back to the first part of your observation, that, you know, it was a routine practice not to make voting available at the campus. There was plenty of excuses made, like, well, it's just always been that way. But that happens, the theory around UNT happens to be where there's the greatest concentration of registered voters. Now, I, you know, just to not, you know, gloss over the fact, that's something that I did on council and got in trouble for. And, you know, I would humbly say, it was good trouble to say that there should be polling where the registered voters are, not where they'd have to walk a mile, because half students don't have cars, up to North Lakes Rec Center, and a mile back to vote. So, you know, that's, that's a pretty big step right there. Now, how do you keep it going? I have, I have visited with student groups, and, and, you know, I just, I take it as a, you know, bit of a, a bit of guidance from you. Yeah, I should do more, I can do more. But to students who wonder, does this matter to them? Probably anything you, you care about most, mostly what you care about politically, is reflected in your local politics. And you can actually have a very disproportionate impact if you do participate. So if you care about voting rights, if you care about environmental protection, if you care about equality, all of those things are on the ballot. My, my opponent is primarily motivated to run, I mean, this is kind of odd, and a weird thing to have to say, but I, you know, I just gotta be honest. There's, he's got a range of issues where he points out our differences, and mostly if it encourages discrimination or disease, he seems to be for it. I'm sure he doesn't think of it that way. But, you know, he's criticized my vote to bring the polling place to campus. He's, his primary interest in running is because I support an anti-discrimination ordinance. When the only public policy measure that we could take to, to contain a deadly pandemic was a universal mask ordinance, I pushed for that. I, I'm the one who called for the emergency session where we got it passed. And, you know, on his page, when somebody posted, "No masks," he gives it a big thumbs up. I pushed for safer gas well setbacks. You know, if you care about environmental issues, you should care about the fact that building a house within 500 feet of a gas well puts, exposes someone to eight times higher cancer risk. You know, I don't feel that's appropriate for council to just read that, ignore it, and say, yeah, nothing, nothing we should do. You know, and he's, he's been very critical of that. So, if you care about those issues, have impact. You, you know, take advantage of the fact that we're putting, you know, that we've got polling right there, and you're going anyway to vote for president. I sure hope.
So, you mentioned something a second ago in your answer, and, and this is, in a lot of ways, the elephant in the room for this particular seat. It's kind of created a little bit of an editorial conundrum for us in how we present this, because there's a number of things that, you know, the members of Denton Matter, you know, care about. I want to allude back to some things that your opponent has stood for and stated. On the record, in articles in the Denton Record Chronicle, he has basically ridiculed the trans community, the LGBTQ community. He has stated that his reason for running came from an exchange that he had with you after an ordinance about, you know, LGBTQ equality. When we think about, you know, personal rights, civil rights, things like that, we usually don't tie them back to municipal elections, right? But we've seen, you know, Black Lives Matter become very important at the municipal level in the last year. We know that, you know, equality ordinances are very important, you know, at the local level. We know that generally speaking, when people want to, they start locally in small areas. What is your commitment to civil rights? How do you feel it's important? And how does a city council person advance the cause of civil and human rights in these elections? Or actually, in your seat, once, you know, once you're elected?
My purpose in being in the seat is to look after the health, safety, and general welfare of Dentonites. You know, I'm not there to fulfill an agenda. However, you've got to go from some kind of basic principles. To me, equality is just, it's just American. It's, and, you know, particularly the issue you raised about the ordinance, it's increasingly Texan, and it's very Denton. We live in a diverse, you know, a very diverse community in Denton. And I think it's very much in the spirit of Denton to just, you know, respect others and not hassle each other. And, and that unfortunately, in hiring and housing, happens here. And I think it's just, you know, you just have to kind of recognize the call to conscience to say, we shouldn't allow that here. Supreme Court has already said that LGBTQ status, it's not constitutional to discriminate on hiring. Much of what is in city councils' lane has to do with housing. It's about half of what we do seems to be to do with housing. And protecting people from losing the housing that they pay for because of their identity, I think is critical. You know, it's very interesting that he tracks back to that, to that exchange we had, because I was listening really carefully to understand, because I represent him, too, you know? And I was trying to understand what exactly is the issue. And I couldn't really pull it apart from what he had to say on the day. So I went up to him afterwards, and we have apparently very different recollections of that conversation. Because, you know, I asked, like, what is it that he's really trying to achieve? And he said, "Look, I'm an evangelical Christian minister, and I don't want to..." You know, he listed some of the aspects of his faith. And he said, "And I don't want to be forced to hire someone who doesn't ascribe to those things." Well, without knowing that he was going to eventually run against me, I worked very hard behind the scenes to find language, because I thought that made sense. You shouldn't have to hire someone for any advocacy organization that doesn't ascribe to the mission. So, I actually proposed language that was in what we discussed on council already, to say, any advocacy organization, including a church, can be presumed to be allowed to hire people who agree with the mission. But that's different than saying you can discriminate against them because of who they are. So, you know, whatever is transpiring now, I still represent him, you know? And I want people, I want, you know, a gay rights organization to be able to affirmatively choose to hire people who support gay rights, you know? And a mosque should be able to hire Muslims. I mean, you should be able to hire people that, that are in pursuit of your mission. But we are all equal before the law. Your, your, you know, your identity, things that are just about who you are, you know, that's part of what makes America great, is that we're different. And, you know, and everybody gets to be that. That's just how it is.
So, speaking of your opponent, he has mentioned, he has an issue with city council meetings. So, city council meetings, we do know, can be quite lengthy. They can often go past midnight, and it's difficult for citizens then to, if they've got an agenda item that they want to speak on, oftentimes to stay that long into a meeting. And your opponent has said that he sees that as a sign of inefficiency, that the council meetings go quite that long. So, my question is, do you agree with that? Do you think there's any other ways to make meetings more efficient, and still enable the voice of the people? And what are your thoughts on participation?
I wish there were more hours in the day. If, you know, there's often competing interests in just about everything we do. So, you have a competing interest in, in how short you'd like the meeting to be, and reasonable, you know, kind of access, as well as an interest in giving due diligence to what comes before us. And I've got a way on the side of being willing to do the work. Now, you know, I'm personally willing to meet more frequently, you know, in order to have meetings at more reasonable times. And not everybody can do that. Now, part of that is because, you know, councils paid a, like, a relatively small stipend. It's not really enough to enable somebody to stop and have this be their job. And I actually would support that, you know, that if, if council members, you know, if a council member can be someone who can leave another job to do this, then they can meet more frequently and cover it all. But, but absent that, would I give short shrift to the issues that matter to the people, because I feel like a shorter meeting? No. You know, I mean, he said, at the same time that he announced, that, he said he could think of nothing more boring than sitting through city council meetings. I've got a solution. If that's your problem, you know, maybe you shouldn't be on council. You know, I find it fascinating and, and galvanizing to get to weigh in as part of our representative democracy, and to have input on all these matters that, that, you know, touch our lives, from police and fire, and parks and libraries, and what gets, you know, approved to be built, and what doesn't. It's vitally important. And if you're not interested, if you're just gonna sit around and wait for your one social issue, however strongly you feel about it, it's only gonna come up once in two years? You can't just be checked out and going, gee, I wish this meeting were shorter. You know, that's not serving people.
So, along those lines, and, you know, having served on a, on a board and everything, generally speaking, if a meeting's going longer, it's because there's a lot of interest from the public in it and people to speak. One of the things that Denton Matters, you know, kind of cherishes is the idea that we can put ideas out there, we can communicate to council members and have them respond. A couple of years ago, I wrote a post about, you know, closing off, you know, four-way stops, so that way, you know, pedestrians could be safer on the square.
I'm glad you rightly claimed credit for that.
Yeah, you made, you, you know, you made that happen, you know, like, you know, at some point. I think Tamsin has a...
Yeah, so I, I lived on Bernard and walked out of my house one morning, and the entire street was shut off for construction, and they were already starting to tear off, tear up the street. And everyone that was in my apartment building was stuck, and we couldn't go to work, because all the trucks were blocking us. And we had no idea that this was gonna happen. And so I wrote a Facebook post on Denton Matters complaining about it, and Paul jumped in, and he...
Yeah, it shouldn't have happened. I'm glad I was able to catch it and, you know, get attention from right people. I mean, it shouldn't...
You changed the notification process so that it wasn't, letters weren't just sent out to the building owners, but actually to the actual residents of apartments. And we were sent an apology letter as well.
Oh, I didn't know about the apology. Well, that's, that was due. So, I'm glad that happened. You know, it, it shouldn't maybe require, you know, a council member's intervention. I mean, staff is generally so professional, and, but, you know, it's a very complex business, you know, managing a city this big. And, and things do happen, and it, and we are part of the, you know, the feedback loop. And it does get attention when a council member, you know, raises an issue to staff. So, it's, it's very important that you have a council member who's, who cares about the job, and is, you know, invested. Because, you know, what you do actually at the dais is, is only a percentage of the job. If you look at, well, I don't want to comment on other races, but you can look at the Friday reports and see, they report out what percent of requests come from council members. And I think you'll see, I'm, I'm well-represented in that pie chart. Because, like, what do you do? You know, you know, I know not everybody would like the fact that I have a business background, but I worked in one of the most hated industries, which is cable. Nobody likes their cable company. But, one of the tasks was that if anybody wrote a letter to the president, that got, those got distributed to the senior staff, and we had to respond. Now, think about how mad you've got to be by the time you write a letter to the president of the cable company. How much disrespect and inaction have you experienced? And I loved, feared initially, but came to love doing that, because people just were so, almost mystified by the fact that you might actually care what happens, and that you might actually make their lives better. And, you know, I, I view constituent service very much through that lens, that you've got to have someplace to go with those issues. Somebody's got to care, and so that's my job.
So, I want to loop back to something real quick, and might be a slightly uncomfortable topic, but, but I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to discuss this. So, we started talking about, about voting on campus and everything. You mentioned you got in trouble for that. Now, if I remember correctly, you actually submitted yourself to the ethics board on that one. But one of the things that, you know, if someone were to look up Paul Meltzer right now, probably the first thing we would see is a headline on Google that says something about ethics. Denton Matters is big on ethics, transparency, environment, things like that. But ethics is a big one. I've heard people, you know, in, in, you know, running against you, talk about the idea you have this ethics investigation. Can you give us the full story on that one, so that way, you know, it's, people can...
It's, it's, it's really a very simple story in terms of the basic facts. So, I advocated for a polling place on or near UNT campus. That was added to the list. This is for the 2019 election. I voted for that. And, let's say, people wanted to make trouble for me, and said, "Wait a minute. Your wife is a creative writing professor at UNT. Isn't that a conflict of interest?" You know, I leave it to, to the voters, like, okay, you know, if, if you really think that's a conflict of interest, where the polling places are. But I could tell you, the city council, after that was, you know, such a clear exploitation of a kind of a flaw, the ordinance, city council changed the ordinance, because it was so obviously, you know, screwing. In fact, even at the time, the person who brought the charge said, "It doesn't make sense," but, you know, I can see how, the way it's worded. Interestingly, the person who initially issued the advisory opinion from the ethics board, saying that I shouldn't vote on that, which I thought was so clearly wrong, because there was no conflict of interest. But that person eventually came on council, and he put forward the, the measure to make that not be a violation. Now, it's a little ironic to me that my opponent uses this thing that most people plainly see as defense of voting rights, have no conflict, you know, no way that I could... conflict, you know, no way that I can personally benefit. You know, he would use that to create that charge while he takes thousands of dollars from these special interest real estate packs that are going to be bringing business before council. That's legal. I mean, you know, I'm always struck by, you know, that what's really alarming isn't illegal behavior, it's what's legal. So, you know, if you want to talk about ethics, that's perfectly legal. But if you want to take thousands of dollars from people explicitly to advocate for a special interest when you're going to be ruling on their cases, I I wouldn't do it. And in fact, if I can say a little more about that, I've said, I won't take special interest PAC money. Well, then then I got endorsed by PAC, the firefighters. Firefighters looked at every race. I was actually the only person that they endorsed in this race. And, you know, I hope that it's because they believe in fair play and good government. Well, their endorsement came with a five hundred dollar check. So what do I do about that? I've just said I won't take PAC money. And I didn't say pounds, you know, pounds down with your, you and your check. What I decided to do was, the check is not hitting my bank account. I endorsed the back of it over to the Muscular Dystrophy Association, which is the firefighters' cause that they have that fill the boot fundraiser for. And I literally put that check in the boot. I think they're very happy to get the contribution back.
You know, my next question was actually going to be about PAC money. Because that actually came up last, and you know what, you you answered it. So we'll just kind of do a quick, you know, recap on that one. Because one of the concerns I had was last night at a forum in southeast Denton. I I heard a very inaccurate description of what PAC money was. And it was described as being a way of, you know, full accounting and disclosure. And and PAC money i- is actually not. You know, PAC money kind of tends to obscure who's paying the money. And their whole point of a PAC is to basically ideally gain a little bit of influence. Not not all PACs are bad. You know, there are some PACs that, you know, have, you know, that are active for basically voting rights and human rights and things like that. But I I I do want to clarify that sometimes you hear a candidate go, you know, PACs are just a way of accounting for donations. And generally speaking, that's not accurate.
No, it's definitely to gain influence for for their their interests. And I would, you know, point out that I think it's pretty effective. If, you know, if you're, if if you're for sort of balanced approach to growth that will protect our quality of life, and then look at, you know, the votes that are always for development every square inch, no matter what. And then look at who gets money from the interests that support that. You're going to see that it appears to be a pretty good investment on their part. So, you know, whatever claims to hide, you know, I probably may have. He is clearly indicating his alignment with that special interest.
So my next question.
If I could just say a sentence more, I'm not against growth. We need housing. We need housing up and down the scale. You know, and we have to do it in a smart way so that we end up with a with a Denton that we still like.
Okay, so my next question. We are still deep in the COVID crisis, but hopefully the worst is behind us as far as impacts to the city goes. But what do you think are the next steps that council is going to have to take to move us into a post-COVID Denton?
There's there's actually, you know, there's a strong desire on everybody's part because we're just fatigued. You know, to feel that we're past the worst. And I I honestly don't know that or not, whether we are or not. There's, it's not obvious that anything has fundamentally changed. I think the idea ought to have been back when, you know, even at the national level, people were talking about a shutdown, which, you know, is terribly costly. That time should have been used to create the system so that we can live with it safely and contain it. You know, the the money that, I mean, now I'm kind of talking about at the national level. But, you know, the money that went into to say, even to very big businesses, if that had gone into reorganizing production lines, getting the Plexiglas up, figuring out a systematic way of testing and then isolating, then we could kind of operate and thrive and still enjoy life, you know, while containing it. And I think that's, you know, generally the direction that I seek is what what's the most that we can do safely? Now, you know, obviously, that's it's the one of the list of things where, you know, my opponent seems to be like for discrimination and disease. Like I said, he probably doesn't think of it that way. But, you know, the one thing that's the most risky is is huge mass gatherings, especially where people are drinking and eating and have to congregate in close proximity in order to do that. So, you know, it's pretty clear to me not that we should not have supported the mayor's waiver for the rodeos, which is, I would love to get back to Denton having a rodeo. But I I think that's just unwise. And, you know, my opponent has criticized me for that. But I'll I'll be continuing to look for ways that we can do more to in to have commerce and have art and, you know, enjoy life safely. I was also criticized for being open to the possibility of having square closures to create more outdoor space for people to, you know, interact with the businesses. Some were for it and some were against it. There are probably ways that we could do other things short of what I put out as just sort of an opening gambit. But, you know, the key is to be open to brainstorming with our local business community to say, what can we do to give you more opportunities to trade safely with the public so we can kind of get through this altogether?
Cool. So I think we we kind of discussed a number of things, you know, in an election. Very often, you know, we wind up having a situation where, you know, candidates wind up discussing their opponent. Wrapping this thing up, you know, a- as I mentioned, the the basic ideas that drive Denton Matters are the environment, ethics, transparency, and engagement, you know, including inclusion, things like that. You know, wrapping this up, leaving us, leaving this for us as we get ready to head off to the polls. Kind of give us your thoughts, your final thoughts, your final pitch on why it's Paul for all, on why keep Meltzer on, you know, on council.
Memorized my various slogans over the years.
But, you know, can you drop a few ideas on, you know, on on this for us and everything? So that way people can remember exactly why they should go with you.
Yeah, it's, the choice is pretty stark that, you know, there was an environmental questionnaire that was done, much like yours. I encourage you to find it on Facebook. My opponent chose not to respond to it, you know, because I think, I don't, I think he probably judged correctly that his opinions wouldn't go over so well. I'm the person who has, you know, brought forward, you know, and kind of knocked on the door of staff to to say, hey, remember, we talked about an equality ordinance or or, you know, non discrimination ordinance? We said we're going to wait till after the Supreme Court cases. They happened. Let's bring it back. You know, it might have been to my advantage not to have to deal with that question, wait, wait till after the election. But it's like, this is what we said. So, you know, generally speaking, I'm the person who sets big goals that I think are pretty clearly aligned with the Denton Matters audience. And and I ask, I set the big goals, I ask for the plans and I follow through. That's why we see the accomplishments there. I'd say the main risk is that people don't ordinarily engage with what's happening at the local level. Just only think what matters in Denton is the top line on the ballot. And, you know, my appeal to anyone watching this is start at the bottom and ensure that you're making the world a better place, starting here.
Okay, so on that note, real quick, people watching this, what's the what's the best way to get in touch with you? If they have questions either about the election coming up or if, you know, after the election, you know, their concerns, what their concerns might be.
Sure. A lot of people reach me through my Facebook page, which is Paul Meltzer, Denton City Council. And I'm really there for you twenty four seven. This is my job. So you can Facebook message me there. My phone number is nine four zero two two zero two zero two seven. You can text me, you can call me. You can email me at city council. That's paul dot Meltzer at cityofdenton dot com. I don't know why it's not cityofdenton dot org, but it's dot com. And I would say, you know, try me. I'm I'm constantly in dialogue with with constituents and I I enjoy it.
And just for everybody watching at home, we just want to repeat that early voting starts this Tuesday, October thirteenth. And the election day is actually November third. So if you guys have some time, go out and vote. And you have to go all the way down to the bottom of the ballot for the municipal elections. So go vote.
Thanks for joining us, Paul. Once again, Matt Pernetta, Tamsin Price, the Denton Matters one on ones with candidates. Appreciate you coming out and dialing in, I guess.
Thanks for doing this. It's great. It's the best forum, you know, that we've, that I've been part of so far in terms of being able to, you know, really share more complete thoughts. So thank you very much.
Excellent. You have a great day. Thanks, everyone, for joining.
Bye bye.